Buildings and grounds, it's all stuff we discussed last week and it's disinformational.
You want to just read the headline and then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, just to kind of explain that we already discussed. Because there's no use.
Yeah, we almost lost power last night.
They blew down our batting cage out here. It was anchored and stuff. You know, and it's just now.
Yeah.
It blew down.
Yeah, we lost power in the middle of the night. My youngest woke up because her nightlight was out, so she freaked out.
Yeah. Eric, you ready for us to get started?
Oh, yeah.
Are you good?
Okay, cool. I think we're ready.
Great. Uh, six oh three, we'll call the meeting to order. Everyone, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
At pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the glory of the Constitution.
Roll call, please, Shelley. Blossy? Derland?
Here.
Fitzgerald?
Here.
Hannah?
Here.
Hoover?
Here.
Jordan? Here. Murray?
Here.
Nolan?
Here.
Henrys?
Here.
A present. Uh, minutes of the regular meeting held February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five are attached. Secretary recommends that these minutes be approved as presented. Entertainer motion to approve.
So move in a second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, and we'll go into our reports. We have a student report tonight.
Hi, my name is Yegor Kavdov. First, I would like to start with the ending of winter sports seasons. All winter sports unofficially ended. Congratulations to the varsity boys basketball team for making it to playoffs where they won two games before getting eliminated from the tournament. Congratulations to Colton Wade for making it to state for wrestling after receiving second place at regionals and districts, which led him to advance to states at Hershey, where he took fourth place. Congratulations, Colton. Now to spring sports. Since the end of the winter season, sports season, spring sports have started and are a full swing. Spring sports include junior high soccer, varsity softball, varsity baseball, and track and field. Now onto events happening at the school. Natural honor society will be holding their induction ceremony this Wednesday, March nineteenth at seven P. M., where they will be inducting twelve new students. Ninth grade students will be attending a career fair on Thursday, March twentieth. Your book is hosting donkey basketball this Friday, March twenty-first, at seven P. M. at the high school gym. Students will go head to head against each other and their teams. Tickets are eight dollars in advance and ten dollars at the door. Tickets in advance can be purchased by any yearbook member. Students will have the opportunity to participate in the end of our period events through the SOR program. The events include a trip to go bowling on March twenty-seventh and a duck hunt on, on the twenty-eighth. Grant fundraisers include the seniors who are selling virtue pop chocolate bars. Baseball is selling T-shirts starting on the twenty-third. Outdoor clubs start selling pie candles at the start of next week. The class of twenty twenty-six is selling dish plans next week, and junior high soccer will also be selling clothes next week. That is all that I have for today.
Thank you so much. All right, admin reports. Uh, Mr. Fessler?
Um, outside of just regular things, uh, been, uh, working on, um, I will be working on, uh, online testing, ensuring that's doing well, and, uh, so we hit that beat. And, um, too, because I keep thinking of addition. Um, and, uh, yeah, it's not.
All right, yep. Any questions?
Oh.
Oh.
You came, so some, uh, so.
Oh.
That's a sorry.
For the, just for the buildings?
Yes.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Uh, Randy?
I mentioned in my board report that we're still working through the special education monitoring. Uh, it's not, it's not going the way that it typically would, uh, because the hero advisor has been having some, uh, health issues that have prevented him from being on site. So we've been, um, doing things a little bit differently than, than how they typically run that. But he, um, he's been working really hard at trying to, to be able to finish the things that he needs to do. Um, and he will be on site, uh, next week. Uh, he's hoping to be able to finish up some things. Uh, this has required me to kind of redo some things that I spent a lot of time on because his, like, the schedules changed. There's observations and different things that have to happen as a part of this monitoring. But we're, we're, uh, just work, working through it. And, um, so far, the things that he has reviewed, he said, have been really good. You know, he doesn't, um, have any major concerns at this point. Uh, but when he's completely finished with the monitoring, I'll be able to report back to you, like, what, what his findings and. Where it's just, uh, taking a little bit longer than it, it typically does. Uh, but he's still within the timeframe that, that he's allowed. Um, so we're done on that, but we're still working through it.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, sorry, I mentioned my other thing. Sorry. He also, uh, in, in, um, my board report about the intellectual disabilities awareness month, um, they always read a proclamation at the courthouse, uh, for intellectual disabilities awareness. And we did have some students from our life skills classes and some of their peers without disabilities that were able to go to the courthouse. And one of our students, um, read a portion of the proclamation, which was really exciting because she's an elementary age student. And we, we had asked, uh, even high school age students, and they were nervous to, to do that, to read it aloud. And she, she was willing to do that, which was, uh, which was really exciting. And, um, SERV is continuing the, uh, the awareness and celebration later this month. They're having an event, um, ask SERV to, to just kind of, um, you know, bring more awareness and just celebrate differences.
That's awesome.
Now I think really nice.
Do we have a different mic for the YouTube stream than the people on virtual? The, I got a text saying that the mic, they can't hear us on the stream. Mm-hmm. Lynn, I'm coming to you next, but we'll, we'll get those working.
I've just been turning my volume up with my vehicle, so I got a little surround sound. But it was, it was pretty, anybody that's not right up on the mic, it is pretty low this part of the year.
Okay, thanks, Scott.
Do you need us to talk to test that?
That is loud.
Test, test, test. Test, test.
Pretty good.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. All right, Mrs. Everlin, go for it.
I have a couple shout-outs I'd like to give. Um, I would like to congratulate Colton Wade, uh, for finishing fourth at the PIAA state wrestling tournament. Helped finishing, that finished on, on March eighth. Uh, that was a great accomplishment. Um, I was there to watch part of it. It was great to see him. That's the best he's finished in his wrestling, high school wrestling career. I'd also like to give a couple shout-outs to the January student of the month, Evan Brown, and the February student of the month, Ellen Wade. So congratulations to them. Uh, I'm excited that tomorrow, we're going to be working, Sam and I are working with, um, our KSSA teachers and Keystone teachers on reviewing the Firefly data, uh, with assistance from the IU. Uh, so I'm looking forward to that. Teachers are responding, but they're pretty excited about that as well. Um, and I'd like to invite the public to donkey basketball Friday night. Um, it's always a great time for, for the little ones because they still do the, the donkey rising metal.
Thank you. Ms. Callahan?
Uh, just want to update the board. We had twenty-nine students register for kindergarten for next year, um, which is typically average. As opposed to last year, we had a unusually high enrollment. Um, we'll, of course, get more over the summer and spring, but just a shout-out that if you haven't registered, to get out and register, we are full swing into ready for ready. And we have two more dates, Friday night and the following Wednesday, left and right for ready.
Great, thank you. Mr. McMahon? Uh, Mr. Mavis, Mr. Williams?
Nothing further than that.
Mr. Lender?
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate, uh, Colton again and, um, the staff and the students supported. We had a lot of people that traveled, uh, to see him wrestle. Uh, we provided students here, uh, the opportunity to see him every time he was on the mat, um, here in the auditorium. So, uh, we got to fully participate, which is, um, something in the past we haven't been able to do. But it's really nice that we have that technology in place to be able to do that.
In addition, we sent a fan bus on Thursday to see him wrestle.
All right, thanks, everybody. Um, do we have any public input?
Well, I should say all of our wrestlers. I'm proud of all of our wrestlers.
For sure. Uh, did we have any come in online? I don't know the last time we did, but. Thank you for checking. Okay, um, we do not plan to have an executive session this evening. We did have one after the committee meetings on last week, March eleventh, to discuss, uh, personnel matters. And with that, we'll head into finance.
Finance, A. The finance committee recommends acceptance of the following reports. One, the Treasury's report number eight. Two, the Capital Reserve Fund for February. Three, Capital Projects Fund, February. Four, Capital Fund, Cafeteria Fund, provided at the meeting. An iso move. Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
B, the finance committee recommends approval of the following check registers and the February budget summary, uh, total being one million, eight hundred seventy-five thousand, two hundred fifty-five dollars and seventy-one cents. An iso move. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
C, the finance committee recommends approval of the following payment requests from MHE Engineering. One, MHE Engineering Services, five thousand, six hundred forty-five dollars and sixteen cents. Two, eleven B Electric, payment number six, ten thousand, two hundred eighty-five dollars and forty-four cents. Three, LTS Plumbing, payment number eleven, five thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars. Four, Nones, payment number fifteen, ninety-five thousand, ninety dollars and twenty-five cents. An iso move. Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
D, the finance committee recommends approval of an agreement between Sullivan County School District and UPMC Sports Medicine Athletic Training Services. An iso move. Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
E, the finance committee recommends acceptance of a memorandum of understanding between the Northern Tier Regional Planning and Development Commission and the Sullivan County School District regarding proposed career awareness mini grant. An iso move. Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
F, the finance committee recommends acceptance of the following donations. One, donation of two thousand dollars from George Jenkins of the Eaglesmere Air Museum Foundation to Sullivan County Athletics Booster Club for the proposed of purchasing equipment for purpose of purchasing equipment for the new weight room dedicated to the memory of Cliff Muller. Two, a donation, uh, from Deb and Doug Linder to the Sullivan County High School Athletic Booster Club for the, um, purpose of purchasing equipment for the new weight room. Three, fifteen hundred dollar, donation of fifteen hundred dollars from the Sullivan County Council of Arts to the Art Club for the electric art field trip to Philadelphia. Four, donation of one thousand dollars from the Quanis Foundation to the Art Club for the electric art field trip to Philadelphia. An iso move. Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comment?
I want to thank everybody for donating. It's very generous of everybody.
Yeah, I second that. I feel like this list grows longer each month and really appreciate the support of the community. All right, uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's all for finance. Scott, do you want to read athletics and health, or do you want one of us to do it?
No, I can do it. Did you guys can hear me okay?
We sure can.
Okay. Athletics and health. A, the athletics and health committee recommends approval of a varsity wrestling cheerleader coach for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. An iso move.
Second.
Shauna Stick is the.
Yep. Scott, there should be a red letter agenda is the last email that has the names in it. I think it's fine.
I printed out, yeah, I printed this out yesterday, so if it came out after that one, I don't have it.
Got it.
We, we have the names if you want us to give them to you.
Yeah, if you could just put the names on that, add the names to it. You know, Joe, why don't you go ahead and do the remainder of the readings if you have it?
Okay. You want to reread that one?
Okay. The athletics and health committee recommends approval of Shauna Stick as the varsity wrestling cheerleading coach for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. An iso move. Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Do we have to roll call this? Or just roll? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
B, the athletics and health committee recommends approval of Josh Bardo to be added to the list of volunteer coaches pending receipt of the required documentation. An iso move. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
C, the athletics and the health committee recommends approval of Eric Reese and Jody Metzger as volunteer coaches for the track and field for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five season. An iso move. Second.
Uh, motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's do a roll call. Derland?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Jordan? Yes. Murray?
Yes.
Nolan? Yes. Reese?
Abstained.
So seven yeses and one abstained.
That was an easy vote for you. As, as volunteer, it's not like a financial.
Yeah, I didn't know. I was like, we'll just do it this way. Motion carries. Item, oh, I'm not reading. Go ahead.
The athletics and health committee recommends approval of Melissa Swift as the junior high cheerleading coach for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. An iso move. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just appreciate that we have all these in place.
Yes. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
You can finish reading them, Scott, if you want to.
Okay, and thanks, Joe. Appreciate that. Um, E, the athletic and health committee recommends approval to change the name of the athletics and health committee to the athletics and extracurricular committee. An iso move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, and then Doug, I think you're going to present two weight room equipment quotes from Webster's Fitness to us.
Yeah, Joe, do you want to read these? We, we, we have the quotes or the amount listed.
The administration makes a recommendation to purchase the weight room equipment for eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred fifty-one dollars from Webster's Fitness Products Incorporated. An iso move.
Yeah. And this, this is the purchase of the weight equipment exclusive of the cardio equipment.
Second.
Any discussion?
This thing would be like our free weights and things of that nature.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
You want a roll call? Okay, sounds good. Uh, we'll do a roll call, actually. Derland?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Jordan? Yes. Murray?
Yes.
Nolan? Yes. Reese?
Yes.
Eight yeses. Motion carries.
Okay. Okay, the next one is the G. Administration makes recommendation to lease the cardio equipment for thirty-six monthly payments of three hundred eighty-one dollars and seventy-one cents for the total lease of thirteen thousand, seven hundred forty-four dollars and seventy-one cents. It's probably a real lease. An iso move. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Uh, one thing to keep in mind, so just doing some, some quick math here. So with Doug, we've had previous donations. Uh, with the current donations, we're looking at by June, eleven thousand, five hundred. So for a three-year lease, we're only looking at twelve hundred dollars to the district at this point.
Yeah.
June, not this point, I'm sorry. So there'll be another donation coming, but, uh, that's awesome. So thank you for everybody who's donated.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, let's do a roll call. Derland?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Jordan? Yes. Murray?
Yes.
Nolan? Yes. Reese?
Yes.
Eight yeses. Motion carries. I don't think there's any H or I, right?
No.
Okay. All right, go on to buildings and grounds.
Buildings and grounds, it's just information. Uh, and we had went over it at the committee meeting and everything. So I'm not really, there's really no, I see no need for us to, to read over it.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Any objections or questions? All right, then we'll go to curriculum and student activities. Item A, the curriculum and student activities committee recommends approval of an agreement between the Sullivan County School District and the Meadows Psychiatric Center for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven school years. An iso move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, administration recommends approval of the Sullivan County School District's comprehensive and associated plans with the effective date of July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. An iso move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
We put it on, you know, we moved it up on Facebook again and, um, you know, so it's been out there for four weeks. And as of before the meeting, I have not received any email comments.
Gotcha. Well, I just want to say thank you for all the work that went into this. This is an incredibly thorough process, um, of integrating feedback from the school staff, the community, um, looking at data. Um, it takes a ton of work, um, and I think we've got a good plan to set us up for the next three years.
And, yeah, and within the plan, I think we've, we've gone over that it, it sets up surveys every year of the plan. So we're actually getting public feedback at the end of every year when the administration's responsible for reporting to the board what performance factors have been accomplished in, in any given year.
Just to stamp one more time, the priorities are, um, MTSS implementation, responsive classroom implementation, is that right? And, um, and communication, improving communication. Thank you. All right, motion and a second. And, um, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Roll call. Let's do a roll call.
Because we, we have the list for the, how many voted yes or no.
Gotcha, no. Roll call, please. Derland?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Jordan? Yes. Murray?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Henrys?
Yes.
Eight yeses. Great, motion carries. And that is all for curriculum and student activities. We'll go to personnel. All right. Letter A. Administration recommends acceptance of a letter of retirement from Douglas Linder as superintendent with an effective date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. An iso move. Oh, yes.
Okay.
Um, administration recommends acceptance with regret of a letter of retirement from Douglas, Douglas Linder as superintendent with an effective date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. An iso move.
Second.
Motion and a second. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Stillett.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll read my letter and then I have a, a few comments. You know, after much consideration and personal reflection, I'm notifying the board of my intent to retire at the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. It's been an honor and a privilege, uh, to have served this district and the Sullivan community for the last twenty-five years. I served in a position of district technology, businessman. I served in a position of district technology, business manager, and superintendent. I have witnessed incredible progress made by the district to develop and support our student citizens, and as my heartfelt wish that the board continues to support the hard-fought progress we have made in our classrooms, our activities, and our athletic programs. I thought with that, you know, I, I'll digress here a, a few things. You know, going back, um, years ago, uh, when I first came, there was an email. You know, I established the first LAN, the first exchange server. You know, we had the classrooms for the future, uh, of which, uh, Devlin there was the technology coach. You know, we started putting technology in the classrooms before, which is maybe a teacher machine. We saw the growth, I think, by the end of beaming in technology to over six hundred computers in the district. Um, and that goes to, you know, our computer labs, um, you know, it goes to tech ed where we went with automated, uh, automated lathes, uh, down there, something that only a lot of CTCs have. You know, I was, I was just watching, um, uh, one of the episodes of Last Man Standing, and they were complaining about public education. It said, what did I use to get in public education? We had driver's ed. They don't do driver's ed anymore. Sullivan has driver's ed. Uh, we don't do home ec. Guess what? Sullivan does home ec. We don't study history. Guess what? We even study PA history in Sullivan. We don't have tech ed. We have automated lathes. We just put in a new laser cutter for our students, something that a lot of CTCs don't have. We're providing our students with access to programs. You know, we run activity buses so all students can participate in extracurriculars and athletics. We provide summer school and tutoring at no charge. Uh, we don't have activity fees for students. We're in the CEP, students get free breakfast and lunch. We do a tremendous amount for our student citizens. Yeah, I was thinking, over this time, I've sat in this room or another room more than four hundred and fifty times. Like, the first ten years, we had board meetings twice a month, and our committee meetings were scattered all over the week. So, um, you know, I, I, I appreciate only having one a month. You know, sometimes it seems like we got together just to get together, and then you didn't have a quorum, and you couldn't vote anyway, and you had to come back the next week. So I, I appreciate the format of the board and the committees that we have in place. You know, there are a lot of other big changes that in the business office I helped, uh, push forward. We paved the parking lot. Uh, we have a fuel depot for our school buses, so, um, we can, uh, reduce the cost of our transportation by purchasing diesel in bulk at state contract, uh, which lowers the expense of our contract. Spearheaded the biomass, which, um, you know, that was a big question mark in the beginning. That biomass plant, when it was built, um, it was a one-point-nine million-dollar project, one-point-two million of which were, was grant-funded, and a loan for over six hundred thousand at one percent, that essentially in operating, the district paid off in eighteen months. So that, we'd be spending upwards of seven hundred thousand dollars a year in fuel oil, most of which all is imported in our contract with, um, with Mark Lewis. I gotta give a shout out for that. Hasn't been twenty-seven thousand for any of those years. Seven hundred thousand, twenty-seven thousand. You do the math. So all of that extra money that we're not spending on fuel oil, uh, and Chris has kept running that plant, even though he complains about it, goes back into the classroom. So that's classroom technology, that's curriculum, that's textbooks. That's staff that we get to fund because we're not paying for oil and we're not paying for diesel. So we've made some, um, smart moves in the past. You know, we had some tragedies here, we had to, uh, work through the fire recovery. That was a huge thing. I mean, our buildings were torn apart from that, but, you know, all in all, in the end, here we are sitting in a brand-new auditorium with acoustics that they should've had in nineteen sixty-three. But, you know, we made our way through COVID, and I was really proud of our community, uh, in COVID, the amount of volunteerism and the support that we had. The, the administrative staff, uh, the kitchen staff, the maintenance, we're making deliveries of equipment when we couldn't be here. We're providing meals. Companies like Hershey was providing us free ice creams, so Fridays were ice cream Fridays. It was just good to see, and we were delivering boxes from the food bank. You know, I'm obviously glad we're out of that, but even in that next COVID year, we were in school a hundred and forty-three out of a hundred and eighty days. And most districts can't say that, and that was because of the precautions we took that allowed us to come back in under the requirements that we had, restrictive requirements, and every year after that was a hundred and eighty days, so. And then our latest project, that athletic addition that we're putting in, that is something that our athletes, our student athletes have needed, I think, since they built this building. We're up against programs that have conditioning and training, weight training programs that far outstrip our current capacity to provide that to our students. We're gonna be more competitive, our athletes are gonna be healthier, they're gonna be stronger. And that was something that it, it took in, in introduction of, of, I think it's time, and it was during COVID, to refinance the current debt to start, um, raising that money. And Anthony's here, he kind of jumped on it at the time, and, you know, it was all about, well, let's do it, and let's do it as soon as we can. So, you know, COVID kinda kept us from building for a while, but we got on that right after that, at that point. And I think that will be a tremendous addition to our programs. Couple other things, you know, I, since I've been here, there have been eight separate individuals that have been superintendent in the last twenty-five years. You know, we've had, um, Pat Hunt, Catherine Gruber, Steve Gobble, Bill Martins as an interim for, for a while, of course Catherine Gruber came back a couple of times. Craig Skaluba, Patty Cross, Susan Higley, and, and myself. So, um, you know, it's been, it's been a crazy trip, but I've appreciated it, and I appreciate who I work with, and I hope the board, um, sees fit to find a suitable and, and a suitable candidate that wants to be in Sullivan County, um, loves our students, and participates fully in our community, so.
You wanna?
I think you're gonna be missed.
Joe added, with regret. It is regret you're leaving us, however, congratulations. We all worked for that, uh, retirement goal at the end. Well deserved. You, just since I've been on the board, have definitely, uh, been through tough times. So thank you so much for, for being our, our superintendent and working with us to get these things done, Doug. So congratulations, and I hope the next chapter of your life, uh, is very eventful in the ways you want it to be.
Yeah, twenty-five years, I don't think this district or this county could ask for anything more. You know, so I'll say thank you on behalf of, uh, everyone that you've served over those twenty-five years. It's, it will be hard to find someone who has the commitment to this county and, and, everything that, that you have brought to the position. And, just like Anthony said, like, we, we, we very much hope you have a wonderful retirement because it is so well deserved.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. All right. Go ahead, make a statement.
I'll go first. This news I received this week is just a little bittersweet. I've been here just a little bit longer than Doug, not much. So the things that he's talked about, I've got to witness the contributions and the wonderful things Doug has brought to this district. I mean, I was here when he started the email onto the classrooms as a future, and bringing the smart boards into the classroom. You know, up to now, we, we're one-to-one, and, and he had something to do with all of that. It's hard to go back and think of what the district was like before Doug was here. I, I clearly remember the director of technology that was here, I don't, I gotta call him, yeah. Participating in some of the things that he was doing is nothing like what we got when Doug started on with the district. We benefited tremendously from having him on staff here. It was a relief when, as new administrators, um, we were kind of in a scary position, um, and Doug brought us through that, so I thank him for that and for bringing us to where we are now for everything. So that's, uh, I did ask him yesterday, I said, what are you gonna do with your free time? He's like, take calls from the district office. He's right. Just to piggyback on that, Doug, it's been wonderful working with you, you're not getting rid of us. You might believe it, but I'm not. And I just think it's so commendable how you stepped up and took over when most people wanted to run the other direction. I really believe that you saved our district in a lot of ways, um, and just thank you for everything. It's been a privilege working.
Doug, I don't even know what to say. So, um, I was a student here when Doug was working as the technology director, and I remember that very, uh, very clearly, and when I was going back here to teach and knowing that he was the business manager, it brought, uh, some sense of comfort, being like, okay, you know, Doug is here. Uh, but he, he's always been, uh, extremely supportive of me. He's, he's one of the, uh, main reasons that I came into the administrative, you know, position, and he was just so supportive of me during that, um, during that transition, and just, uh, I'm not really sure if that was an opportunity that I wanted to take it, um, and he, you know, very, uh, very supportive through all of that. The type of leader that Doug is, both when he was in the business manager role and in his current position, it's very subtle things that wouldn't, you wouldn't notice unless you're watching him. So Doug's the kind of guy that, uh, like, if he's walking down the hallway and he sees that a kid spilled a bag of chips on the floor, you know, and he's just like, I'll just go hit a dustcan and just sweep it up. He's on his way to go do who knows what important, you know, like, thing he was doing. He's like, oh, there's some chips on the floor, and I'll just, like, sweep them up and clean it up, and, like, oh, the generator's broken, I'll just go out and check it out. But, you know, it doesn't sound, you know, when you see a, see a superintendent, you know, he's just, um, he's a very, um, demonstrates, uh, like, certain leadership, and he is, he's here for the students, he's here for the teachers, he's here for the administrators. Some of the things that, uh, that really stand out for me, and this is my eleventh year of working, being hallway neighbors with, with Doug, uh, working down the hallway from him, um, some of the things that, that just, like, stand out for me is, uh, you know, he had mentioned COVID. Um, when we were, like, working to get the vaccine station here, like, at the, at the district, there was a moment that we were standing there, and there were just all of these, these people that were, like, trying to get these vaccines, and, and, like, I mean, they were making phone calls to people, and somebody canceled, like, you can come in, and Doug stood there and he looked at me and he said, you see all these people here? He's like, they're going to be able to hunt their grandchildren after this. And I'm just, ah, like, what are you, I don't understand. But, uh, Doug, I have also shared, uh, a lot of laughs, uh, over the years. I don't know if a lot of people know, but a friend that Doug, um, is, I got him to, to share a lot of things, so I did, but a couple. For just as a, for instance, one time he paperclipped my telephone cord, so that, like, with a black paperclip that I couldn't see, so, like, when I went to answer the phone, I had to look at my pen on my, on my desk to answer the phone. Wants to take all of my pens together in my little crock, so, like, when I'm on the phone and I'm, like, trying to take a note, I take it out and pick up all of them. But, uh, but it, it's those kind of things that, um, like, I think we've been through, through a lot of good times, but a lot of challenging times, um, over the last decade plus, but it's those types of moments that, like, really help you, like, carry through in your position and, and, and times when, when we're, like, I, I just don't even know if we can, like, I keep doing what I'm doing, it's like, he's, he's the guy that, that kinda helps you, helps you get through. And, you know, and it, like, Doug is one of the only people around that I can share military stories with, and sometimes we'll be in the middle of some nonsense and it'll be like, oh, that reminds me of the, you know, thing. Uh, but just, just, uh, a lot of laughs, a lot of, um, you know, a lot of good times, but also, uh, just, you know, he's, he's really been, um, huge in, in just me developing as administrator and as a person, and I'm just gonna, I'm just, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, I do have something to say. Well, Doug, the whole time, if you thought you won't be taught. I came to the district with little general knowledge of the backside, the business side, that's how school works, you know, as a parent, didn't see that stuff. So, and coming back here was, was also all produced by Alabama, graduated from there. Very strange, uh, coming back after all those years that we, well, came from, but Doug has always been behind me. I had a lot of fun, but at the beginning. Uh, plumbing and anything else, no idea, I, I, I'm okay. But the other side, we had changed superintendents and difficulties there, maybe, but Jeff and IT is all that stuff, he was always behind me, but, so. He's, uh, a great addition, and was a great guy to be here, and everybody should be proud of that. And I know the rest of the admin team, Ben was wrong, but we, we all love. Sure we got. Saying, are you all right? Go on.
So it has to be said, and I, I, I should've said it when I spoke earlier, but, uh, there is a, a very large group of people who aren't resent, uh, represented here tonight, and that's the Sullivan County students. So there was a tenth grade student who came home and said, our superintendent's leaving, and almost tears. And it was told to me that another student gets on our agendas to read what they are because they're in student government to see what's going on. And it was, um, a lot of sadness. A lot of students, uh, are, are very proud of Doug. They feel like he is a, a person, not this authority figure that they can't talk to. And I know for a fact there are many, many students who are going to be, uh, very saddened with you leaving Doug, so that is something to be very proud of. I'd never heard that from a superintendent from the students. Like, that, that's amazing, so congratulations.
I'd just like to, to add, uh, that in addition to the many times that, that the other administrators spoke about Doug pitching in and helping out, um, taking care of things, being a servant leader, I have, you know, many of those, uh, memories as well. But one that I'd like in the, in the public record is shortly after my dad was struggling with some health issues, uh, he just needed, we just needed help getting things set up in my parents' living room, and he was, like, right in the truck, went and fetched a, a lounge chair for him and had it, had it set up within fifteen minutes, so. That's, that's the kind of leader and, and man he is, and I'm incredibly appreciative of that. Thank you.
Can we get a round of applause? Woo! All right. We ready to vote? Are we allowed to say no? No? Roll call, please. Derland?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Jordan, yes. Murray?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
And Reese?
Yes.
Eight yeses. Who cares? We just keep going, that's how it goes. Administration recommends approval to advertise and to contract assistants to lead a superintendent search for the vacated position, and I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
What I meant by the contract assistance there is to contact the last on you first.
Yep. Yep, just to name, I think, you know, Doug informed the board last week, and we've already been in conversations about how to get that started, we're all very aware, like, we want to, to do a thorough process, but, you know, an expedited process to make sure that we set ourselves up for next school year, so more on that to come. But we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Right. Letter C, administration recommends acceptance of regret with a letter of resignation from Alan Williams as the business manager with an effective date of March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, and I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second, I'll turn it over to Mr. Williams.
Well, you know, I would like to express my gratitude and for the opportunity to become the business manager of the Sullivan County School District. I've valued my time here, and I'm truly thankful for this experience. I can't say enough about the work ethic of everybody I work with in the district office. They're hard workers, but beyond that, they're also great people. I sincerely miss working alongside all of them, and I'm appreciative of the support from all of those who have helped me to acclimate to this role. You know, Lance with all the time and effort he's put in, all the hours we've stayed late to try and get things done, and, and his guidance and leadership has shown me how to do things, and of course Doug, same thing. There wasn't a question, I couldn't ask him that he didn't know, so he was an invaluable resource to me. I also want to extend my gratitude to the Board of Directors for their understanding and empathy of my personal situation. I wish you all, you know, the very best, and I look forward to the continued success of the school district, and many wonderful things that I know are coming, so, thank you.
Yeah, I think no one questions that from day one, you've just jumped right in and become a part of this community, and so thank you for that. You know, things happen at, at hard times, and, and that's part of being a human, and of course, we understand, we, we will miss you, and of course, we want you to do what you need to do. But thank you for all your service so far. All right, let's do a roll call, please. Derland?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Jordan, yes. Murray?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
And Reese?
Yes.
Eight yeses. Motion carries. Thank you, Alan. Letter D, administration recommends approval to advertise for the vacancy created by item C, and I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Just wanna name the same thing here, board's very committed to prioritizing these two searches to make sure that we set ourselves up to continue all the great work that's been happening without interruption. So, thank you, and we look forward to reviewing everybody who comes in. We can do, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Letter E is informational, Tina Mullino will be moving from a support staff employee into an open paraprofessional position.
And that's, that's by support contract?
Okay. Letter F, the personnel committee recommends approval to hire Christine Riddle as a custodian for the second shift position at a starting rate of fifteen dollars and ten cents per hour to begin Monday, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, and I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Roll call.
Roll call, please. Derland?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Jordan, yes. Murray?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
And Reese?
Yes.
Eight yeses. Motion carries. Letter G, the personnel committee recommends approval to hire Elijah Geist as a custodian for the mid-shift position at a starting rate of fifteen dollars per hour to begin Thursday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please. Derland?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Jordan, yes. Murray?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
And Reese?
Yes.
Eight yeses. Motion carries. Item H, the, oh, it's like, woo, it's okay. The personnel committee recommends approval of a request for family medical leave act qualifying leave for employee number one zero zero three four three from April second, twenty twenty-five to April ninth, twenty twenty-five, and I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please. Derland?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Jordan, yes. Murray?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
And Reese?
Yes.
Eight yeses. Motion carries. Twenty-one is informational, Desiree Smith has completed her probationary period on February seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. And letter J, the personnel committee recommends acceptance of letter of retire, with regret, acceptance of a letter of retirement for Maria Rotinsky as a paraprof, excuse me, paraprofessional effective June fifth, twenty twenty-five, and I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I just want to thank Maria for her many years of service to our students. She had, Maria has worked in the district for quite some time, and I was just laughing a little bit, because I remember Maria at Comms Camp when we were little kids, like, her kids being little, and it's just, you know, just being at, being at that stage in life, you know, I guess, and it's, it's gonna be a lot different around here without, without Maria's, Maria's laugh, and, you know, her dedication to the students, and I wish her love and her.
Okay. Do we need a roll call here?
Yeah.
Yep, we'll do a roll call. Derland?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Jordan, yes. Murray?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
And Reese?
Yes.
Eight yeses. Motion carries. And then the other two are just, please hold their scrat.
Like you have to.
Open position.
Oh, sorry, I don't know what I was thinking there, sorry. Letter K is administration recommends approval to advertise for open positions, and I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No, I think we're done. Sorry about that. All right, Anthony, policy and procedure?
Policy and procedure, item A, the policy and procedure committee recommends approval of following policies for the second read, policy two eighteen, student discipline, policy two twenty, student expression, dissemination of materials, policy two two seven, controlled substances, paraphernalia, and policy two thirty-seven, electronic devices, and I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Just to say it out loud one more time for the record, not changing anything about the cell phone policies, continuing because they're working. All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to, in your folders and electronically, we sent the field, the field trip, Paul St.
Yeah, thank you. Take a look at that for next month. All right, and we'll close out with transportation, shall we all do that first? Letter A, administration recommends adding Serena Hatton to the list of approved school bus drivers, and I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes.
All right, roll call. Derland?
Yes.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Jordan, yes. Murray?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
And Reese?
Yes.
Eight yeses. Motion carries. Okay, we are on to board reports. Heather, anything this evening? No? Yeah? Go for it.
Are you talking to me?
Yeah, do you have anything this evening?
All right, I just wanted to, one, ask Ms. Kaler who my kind of contact is gonna be tomorrow for the new student program for the first graders.
Say it one more time, Heather.
What kind of contact for the first grade program?
Just contact the office, contact the office, and we can put you in with whoever that may be.
Okay. Doug, it was nice working with you, and I hope it will continue to be nice working with you as you decide. Good luck in your future endeavors. You'll be successful no matter what you do. Alan, good luck, I hope things get better for you, if you need anything, let us know. And that's it.
Thank you. Scott, anything?
Yes, just wanna congratulate Colton Wade and all the wrestlers, season well done, also basketball team, great, great season, and all the, all the athletics that had the fall season, great job by everybody, looking forward to the next seasons here coming up. Thank you, Doug, for your twenty-five years of service, great, greatly appreciated, and Alan, wish you and your family all the best, sincerely. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Amanda?
I just wanna thank everybody for the donations that we received, of course, thank you, Doug, you know, I said that I'm very happy that you're retiring, I, it's always great to be able to do that, and I hope you really enjoy it, and I'm sad that you're leaving, but I'm happy for you. Sorry that you're leaving, Alan, you know, I hope everything gets better and everything works out for your family. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Eric?
Just congratulations, Colton Wade, and thank you, Doug, and, you know, congratulations on retirement, enjoy.
Joe?
No.
Anthony?
Congratulations, Deb Linder, so much more stuff is gonna get done. I am so happy for you. Doug?
Start that to-do list now.
Maybe it's good luck. But ethanol joking aside, congratulations, well-earned retirement, I, I hope that, like again, I said it earlier, you get to enjoy your time now, not that you didn't hear, but just different, it's just gonna be different. Thanks.
Best wishes, good luck, enjoy. Alan, good luck to you and your family.
Yeah, I mean, I, I echo everything is said, congratulations to Colton Wade, all the athletes who finished their season, there's so many wonderful things happening in the district right now, and I'm grateful for everyone that's made that possible. And then the last thing I'll say is just, as an outsider to Sullivan County, you know, it's been, gosh, I moved here now seven years ago, and I feel like I've learned so much about this area, and one of the things that has stood out time and time again is just the dedication to the community that folks have here, and seeing that in action in this district, as someone who's been an educator their whole career, is just incredible, and I'm so grateful to send my kids here and to be a part of this. So, thank you to everyone, especially Doug. All right, did we have any public input come in?
We didn't have any, like, ding dong, the witch is dead.
The call was from Melissa, she was on her way up and was wondering, the kids actually wanted to come for a meeting, but they're not gonna make it. No, no online.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned, thank you.
All right, board members, Alan has the ballots for the last, so he's gonna hand those out, if you can fill those out for us.